I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today, Monday, May 2, 2022, is now 6:30 p.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubana.
Present.
You have eight members.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If anybody could rise, please, real quick. If we could get a moment of silence and use it as you wish, please. And from the Quincy Scouts, Troop 42, Aiden Healy will come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance Salute to the Flag.
Can everybody please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're first on the agenda is the honoring of the Quincy Scouts, Troop 42 Eagle Scouts. Thank you for that Pledge of Allegiance, by the way. Tonight, we are honoring the Quincy Scouts, Troop 42 Eagle Scouts. Being an Eagle Scout is important. It requires hard work, dedication, and service to others, and instills confidence, leadership, and a commitment to the community. These skills will stay with you throughout your adult life. The Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in scouts. Not only, I want to congratulate the scouts tonight, but also, I want to thank all the troop leaders and volunteers that donate hundreds of hours of time to the scouts every day throughout our community. These commendations and awards will be given out. And before I give them out, my fellow counselor from Ward IV, Brian Palmucci, will be giving them out right here. And then, as you get your accommodation, come into the well right here. But as these commendations will say, "Congratulations on attaining the highest rank in scouting." The Eagle Scout awards signify the unique combination of perseverance, discipline, and integrity required to earn it. This outstanding achievement will certainly lead to many accomplishments during your lifetime. Best wishes for a successful future. Before I open up to give to the accommodations and awards out to, I would like to open it up to any of my fellow counselors that have anything to say. We'll go right into it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Dubana. Happy to help bestow upon these Eagle Scouts commendation from the Quincy City Council. I've often said that one of the most prized roles I get to play as a city counselor has been, over the past decade or so, participating in Troop 42's Citizenship Badge Program. It's usually done in the winter when they can't get outside, and they have to do boring stuff like learn about city government, and how it works, and how the city runs. But the young men that I've had a chance to interact with and get to know through that process have always astounded me with their maturity, their responsibility, and their dedication, not just to scouting, but also to the city of Quincy. And I've gone on to see, they've gone on to do things around the city and elsewhere, around the state and around the country. And I've just been so proud of these young men and what they've been able to accomplish. It really is the Quincy, and especially Troop 42. I can't, no other troop's ever invited me to come speak to them, so I can't speak to any other troop, but can tell you the leadership of Troop 42, from the parents, from the adults that are involved, is just tremendous. And I think tonight is just a, is really just a glimpse of that from the, from the number of young men who have achieved Eagle Scouts. So if you want to come on up when I call your name, or, I don't know if the troop leaders want to come up, you want to help me? Yeah? No? Okay. It's all optional, really. So the first one, the first commendation I'll give is to Aiden Healy, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. There you go. Yeah, you hand it to him. I'll hand it to you.
Aiden.
I think we're going to go for a picture in the well, so you want to go in. So this is really, this is really how government works. It takes two guys to do the job of one, right? I announce a name, and I hand it to him, he hands it to someone else. Maurice?
I'm passing the buck.
Benson? Okay.
Jaden cannot be here with us. She is finishing up her sophomore year at Merrimack College.
Oh, nice.
My daughter.
Nice. So you're going to accept on her behalf? All right. Okay.
And if I could, if I could counsel Palmucci, she's the first young woman from Troop 42 to attain the Eagle. So congratulations to that.
This former Eagle received the honor of the same.
Why don't you come on up, Jess?
Second one.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Leo? Kobe?
Kobe cannot be here tonight. He is in Hangum at a tennis match.
You don't have to come up with excuses. We show up all the time. We don't give anybody excuses. We can still applaud Kobe. And it's names like yours, is why I'm not pronouncing last names, Andy. Anthony?
You get, you get two.
That's it. Sorry, Nicholas. Ah, come on up. Congratulations. And I think the counselors will come in, take a little commemorative photo with you guys, and we're all very proud of you. Thank you for the hard work you put in, and we expect great things of you. You'll do the city proud. We're all confident of that. Thank you.
For his presentation, just want to thank a lot of the City of Quincy directors, commissioners, and folks that work for the city that are in here. I also want to thank Quincy Police Chief Paul Keenan, that's sitting in the back, Fire Chief Joe Jackson, that's sitting in the back as well. And I really thank you guys, everyone for coming out here tonight for the mayor's presentation. Mayor, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. It is that time of year. This is my 14th budget presentation to this body, and I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. First, let me thank this body. I want to thank each member here tonight for the work you do each and every day on behalf of the residents. I also want to thank you for the cooperation, how we work together for the benefit of the residents of our city. Truly appreciate that. Special thanks to Chief of Staff Chris Walker for his work, guidance on the budget, Eric Mason, Mike Rowland for municipal finance, for really putting the document together before you tonight. Also want to thank all our city department heads, our city managers, and certainly our city employees for their leadership and dedication, particularly the last couple of years, during the crazy couple of years we've had. They've had to be creative, they had to be innovative, really think outside the box, and they did. We continue to deliver services to the people of this city, so grateful for all of them. Members of boards and commissions, they didn't miss a beat either. We all adjusted to the times. It was hybrid, and other ways, and Zoom, but we made it work, we made it happen. So thank you to the boards and commissions as well. Also, under the title of some gratitude, I want to express my gratitude publicly to Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito. Their partnership over the past eight years has been just truly remarkable. It has led to millions of dollars coming back to our city for a number of great projects, a lot of different grants. But more importantly, the leadership they showed on a number of issues, not the least of which was transportation and the addiction crisis that the Commonwealth faced. Truly grateful for their leadership and their partnership to this, to this great city. And along those lines, our legislative delegation, Speaker Mariano, Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers, and Representative Chan, for their work on Beacon Hill, especially regarding local aid, Chapter 70, Chapter 90. Their commitment to the city is strong, and we appreciate their work in so many ways. Congressman Lynch and our federal delegation for their help getting us through the last couple of years, extraordinarily challenging years that we've experienced, and certainly with the federal dollars that helped ease some of that pain. And we're certainly prepared, and are preparing, for the infrastructure projects eligible for federal assistance. And I can assure this body that we'll be at the head of the line for each of the categories in that legislation. I know I say it every year, and I don't know another way to say it, but this budget, I believe, really reflects the values of our community. By working together, equality of life second to none in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. People feeling safe in their persons, in their home. Excellent response time in emergencies. A school system that provides every opportunity for each and every child to succeed. Parks and playgrounds that give people of all ages beautiful spaces to enjoy. Library services, senior services, veteran services that rival any city our size. Working with this body, we are rebuilding our infrastructure all across the city. Fixing public buildings, including a new public safety headquarters, a new Squanton School, repairing or replacing sewer mains, water lines, gas lines, new seawalls, and streets and sidewalks, and planting hundreds of trees. I am frequently asked, "Why are we doing so much? Can it wait? Wait for what?" We're doing this work because it's necessary. I believe we're preparing our city so that we can say, down the road, we're leaving it a little better than we found it. We're all doing this work because we have financial stability. There are only a few communities that compare with this city on excess levy capacity. It's a boring subject, I know, but nonetheless, an important one to note. This year, we will exceed $40 million in excess capacity. And over the last 10 years, some $260 million we did not tax. There are cities and towns around us that have to pass Prop 2.5 overrides for a particular project, an individual project, in some cases, just for regular, routine budgets. We're rebuilding our schools, as I said, roads and parks, without getting close to the levy limit. This is a tribute to strong fiscal management, and this council is part of that formula. Tonight before you is our budget of $372.8 million. And there's a lot of detail in this document, and I know in the coming weeks, as the Finance Chairman schedules the meetings with the departments, you'll have every opportunity to ask questions. We'll certainly provide any and all information needed for you to deliberate and make decisions on the individual budgets. So the budget overview, as I mentioned, it's an increase of 7.5%. In the three-year average, about 4%. As you may know, some of the things we did the last couple of years was to help us get through this challenging economy, when our unemployment rate was high, and there was great uncertainty. So therefore, we tried to keep it very lean, and as part of the prob, Pension Obligation Bond, rather, we took some savings last year that will be, help us over time, but it particularly helped us the last two years to get over the hump, if you will. So this budget will have the second year of the Pension Obligation Bond payment. And it suggests the next two years, we're seeing an increase in that as well, and that's, that's when we'll hit kind of a flat line after that. If, as you know, through the discussions with the Pension Obligation Bond, what was before you, we were looking at some real challenging years with the bills coming each year to pay our unfunded liability. So if you, so you see the graph, and I know that my department heads will get into it, but the graph was literally just, just straight up uphill for the next 18, 19 years. By doing what we did, we're going to save $128 million over those 18, 19 years. So we got two more years of a little more of an increase on the death side to cover that. But over time, I believe, looking back at this, it'll be a decision that will be lauded for many years to come. So I thank the council for allowing us to move forward on that. There's also health care increases for our employees, as well as wage increases for the city employees. We're doing what we did last year. We are, well, every city contract is up, as we speak, both on the school side and the city side, come June 30. We are in negotiations with most, if not all of them, we've opened up negotiations with. So I doubt we'll be settled before we pass the budget at the end of the fiscal year. Therefore, this budget will have a pool of money in there under reserve appropriation for negotiations. And again, we can, we can get into that a little bit later, but it's well underway. Some of the highlights would be $3.5 million increase in education spending. That's obviously to cover the wage adjustments that we experienced this year for all departments. But also, we have seen a spike in some certain class sizes, and therefore, this will allow us to add some teachers and the school committee to make some decisions about other challenges and needs in the budget. As I mentioned, the Pension Obligation Bond, this is the second year, $15.6 million in that. It's a $6 million over last, increase over last year. And we're, we're in a good place, as I said, over time, by making the move we did. In fact, a number of cities and towns were looking at this, and many of them did not get it done in time, as the rates began to move rather quickly. I mean, we did get it in just in time. As we know, the economy nationally, there's going to be some additional rate increases going forward. Therefore, the savings gets a little bit more tricky. We got it in time, and that's, that's a real number, $120 million over the 18 years or 19 years to be fully funded for our pension system. It was a true liability, and we dealt with that liability. So again, I thank this body for that. About half of 1% of the budget is new expanded programs. We've got five new police patrol offices. That's really to maintain the current roster. As you know, we have retirements attrition every year. In order to be at the maximum number of the 175 patrolmen, we're always chasing our tail to fill positions. We know when someone's going to retire, they have to at 65 in that category, but there are many categories we don't know. Somebody comes in and files their papers, and it's time to go. In fact, we've seen more of that over the last two years, probably because of somewhat we've experienced in the public safety world. So that'll allow us to get a little ahead of the game, so we're at the actual number of police officers on the street on a regular basis. There's four part-time positions added to the library, that's to expand hours and manage the robust services they're providing. A new food inspector to the health department, that's really just to keep up with demand. We have not been able to do the amount of inspecting we should do, and that's because of the demand. So we felt it was time to add that inspector in that department. Also in here is the community liaison, added to the mayor's office, and that comes from a recommendation from the committee the Counselor Kane has chaired on equality and diversity. And I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit more in detail later, but I got the executive summary and waiting for the full report from the committee, but I wanted to get a placeholder in the budget so that we can, we can meet that request. As I talked about last year, we put the committee together to see what the real need could be. So we'll talk more about that in greater detail later on. We have increased contractual investment in construction supervision in public buildings. As you know, there's more work being done on public buildings probably in the history of the city, and we need the manpower to make sure that the contractors are doing everything accordingly. Expanded cybersecurity capabilities and information technology. We read about that every day in the newspaper, what's going on in that world. So we got to make sure we're doing the right thing there. An expanded language access program in the planning department, which I know this has been a priority of this body for some time. As far as the revenue side goes, things have rebounded fairly well. Our local receipts are exceeding projections. Building fees are strong. Meals tax is up, excise tax is up, hotel tax is up. Hotel taxes bounced back rather dramatically, which is a great thing. We know that was one of the industries that suffered dramatically over the last couple of years. We have an increase in state aid by $4.7 million. 3.5 of that is Chapter 70, which is for education. New revenue from Fernsburg Golf Course offsets operational cuts. We're going into a golf season, and from what I'm told by Commissioner Murphy, that things are going very well. There's a lot of interest and a lot of revenue coming in, so that's a good thing. We'll get into that in more detail during the process. And again, I mentioned the excess levy capacity of $41 million. I believe this budget meets the demands of the constituents. As I mentioned early on, I think Quincy can hold its head up high in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts. One of the top 10 cities in population. I think one of the top cities in services, and what we provide for residents each and every day. And that's really due to the men and women behind me, the leadership they provide, and all the good work that's being done across the city. So we continue to work together, we get great things done, and I appreciate the opportunity to present before you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, although I know it, going right into committee, and those questions probably will be directed to my department heads. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Any counselors have any questions, comments? Thank you, Mayor, for, oh, anybody?
Make a motion to put it in, to accept the report and put the budget into finance.
Okay, a motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Unanimous vote. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, department heads for coming in, commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2022-5505, an appropriation for fiscal 2023 sewer enterprise budget.
Counsel Phelan.
I'd like to make a motion to, to send the 2023 sewer enterprise fund to finance for a later finance committee meeting.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan. We also need to advertise it as well. Do I have a second? Second made by Counsel Palmucci. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous vote, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2022-056, an appropriation for fiscal 2023 water enterprise budget.
Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd make a motion to advertise and refer to Finance Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Refer that into Finance and advertise. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
Number four, 2022-057, an appropriation for $4,330,000 MWRA reduction program for sewer system improvements.
Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to advertise and put in Finance Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to advertise and put into Finance. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2022-058, an appropriation for $7,128,700 MSRF loan for 2023 sewer improvement construction.
Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to advertise and refer to Finance Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to refer to Finance and advertise as well. Do I have a second? Counsel McCarthy, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2022-059, an appropriation for $53 million for district improvement financing.
Do we need to, okay, Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to advertise and refer to Finance Committee.
I had a motion made by Counsel Phelan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a, do I have a, okay, Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
I am definitely in favor of it going into Finance. I just had a question, because this is, this is another order for the district finance improvement and the DIF, and I had asked in a resolve for them to come before for the $181 million, just to kind of get a breakout as to the previous ones, just to get an audit of what we've been spending all the other money on before we go into the next round. Okay?
Okay, Counsel Mahoney. I'm going to, to the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker. Do you want anything? You feel free to.
Through you, Mr. President. Yeah, through you, Mr. President, Madam Counsel, that, that is anticipated, and we fully expect to be back in front of you as part of this whole process. When we sent out the brief outline on the DIF request, we acknowledged at that time that as part of this process, we'd be happy to and want to provide a full update on where we've been relative to the DIF. So that's absolutely part of this.
Thank you. It was a happy.
That's it, Counsel?
Happy.
Anyone else? It's a motion made by Counsel Phelan and seconded by Counsel McCarthy to refer this DIF appropriation into Finance and advertise. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2022-060, an order of land, order of taking, 1455 Hancock Street.
Counselors? We're going to refer, audience? That's okay.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to put it into Finance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2022-061, an order of land, order of taking, for 1459 Hancock Street.
Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to refer to Finance.
Motion made to refer to Finance from Counsel Phelan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2022-062, land.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci.
Moving for approval.
Oh, moving for approval, okay.
This building's been boarded up for like 15 years. Let's not wait another day until we take it. Who needs to think about whether or not we should take a building?
It's been boarded up. And then...
It's been boarded up in the middle of our downtown after we spent, you know, a quarter of a billion dollars in infrastructure. This property, not casting aspersions, this property is a thorn in the side of the city and the progress that we're trying to make. I understand it's a formality perhaps, sending it to finance committee, but for my money, I would like to take it tomorrow if we could, so I move approval of this particular order. This is, for anyone who doesn't know this, isn't that up next to, near Brothers Pizza, the old blockbuster used to be, that block, it's, there was a fire there, it's been boarded up for, I don't know, at least 10 years, so.
Tasso's Pizza.
Yeah.
Yes. Do we have to advertise, are we ready to, can we, okay. Motion made by councillor Palmucci to approve, do I have a second? Seconded by councillor McCarthy, any discussion on the motion? For this one, I'd like to do a roll call, please.
Councillor Andronico.
President.
Councillor Kane.
President.
Councillor Harris. Councillor Liang. Councillor Mahoney. Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Palmucci.
Yes.
Councillor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
How many do we have?
We have four, 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 not five, four, and three present, so the order passes.
Order passes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
Number 10, 2022-063, an order dispositional land on Intervale Street.
Waive the reading. I would move approval on this if I could speak on it, on the motion. This is a property on Intervale Street in South Quincy, it's over, it's a couple of lots behind Monty's Granite, there's, there's like another lot in between TLC, you can't see it from the road. It's not very big, as you can see the square footage here, the size of it here, but quite some time ago, before I was city councillor, so at least, you know, more than a decade ago, this property was taken over by the city for failure to pay property taxes. At the time, the owner had abandoned the property because it was severely contaminated. We took it over, we applied for state and federal grants and resources to remediate the environmental concerns that were there, which were significant. That work has taken place over the last number of years. The property is now contained to the point where it does not pose an environmental safety hazard. I believe there is a use, use restrictions on the property. For instance, I don't think you could build residential there, it's, and it's likely just going to be paved over for something. It abuts on the other side, Crown Colony, make a perfect addition to their parking lot up there. But nevertheless, the city owns it because we took it tax title, so the order is to dispose of the land by offering it up to the public and accepting requests for proposals under, I believe it's a, I don't know if it's a sealed bid or an open bid, but essentially we would be selling this back to the public and putting it back on the tax rolls, so I would move approval of this.
Motion made by councillor Palmucci to approve, do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Liang, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Andronico.
Yes.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Harris. Councillor Liang. Councillor Mahoney. Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Palmucci.
Yes.
Councillor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
Number 11, 2022-064.
Councillor Kane.
Thank you. So this is the next step in the continuation of the municipal broadband project that we've been working on now for just a little over four years, so this is the first of three steps that need to be taken from a legal perspective, from the state, so the first will be establishing, well, there's two votes that the council needs to make, this is the first one, that we'll establish a municipal light plant that would govern the operations of the broadband system, and then if all goes according to plan, we'll have a vote that will go to the citizenry ideally by November to approve this as well. So the, the city continues to actively make progress on this project. Firstly, identifying a pilot area where we can demonstrate the capacity of this, and hopefully if we get these two steps, we can go towards designing a full-scale project to be implemented and designed by next year. So I continue to thank my colleagues for their ongoing support of this project, and for the patience of the public as we make these next steps. Motion to move this into ordinance.
Motion made by councillor Kane to move this into ordinance, do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Andronico, second, do we have a, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous vote, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
Number 12, a briefing in act enabling partnership and growth for growth.
Solicitor Timmons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, good evening, members of the council. In January of last year, the legislature passed, and as part of the economic development bill, an amendment to chapter 48, the zoning statute, the amendment added a section, section 3A, and what section 3A is about is having communities that are serviced by the MBTA create housing opportunities that are, take advantage of the presence of the MBTA. The way this is scheduled to work, all the communities that have MBTA service have been classified based on whether you have commuter rail, buses, a T station that's on a subway route. Quincy is classified as a subway or light rail community, and based on that, there's certain housing demands or expectations that are placed on us. Based on the 2020 housing census, Quincy reported 47,000 housing units. So our community now is going to be part of a formulaic approach to creating housing opportunity within what's called a transit-oriented district. Now, one of the things we're fortunate for here in Quincy is, some or all of you might be familiar with the fact that we've already done this. In 2016, this body passed a council order that created a transit-oriented district down at the North Quincy T Station, and it's been, it's proven to be quite a success. So we have an ordinance in place which puts us well ahead of other communities in the Commonwealth. Based on that fact and a few other dynamics, what I will represent to you tonight is that we'll, we expect to be working this summer on the program and coming up with more particulars. When the statute was passed, implementation of the statute was handed over to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. They drafted regulations that they published, they presented for comment, and the comment period ended in March. So one thing that a number of communities are doing dealing with this is they're waiting until the final regulations come out, to find out precisely what's going to be required of communities. So in discussions with the mayor and Mr. Walker, Mr. Fatsies, who's been on this in the planning department, we expect to be looking at this, this summer, finding out what the particulars will be of the expectation for Quincy in creating a transit-oriented district, whether we can amend what we've done at North Quincy, which I expect we're not going to be able to do, but we'll see, or create another district. So the purpose of tonight is DHCD required that all city councils be briefed, so you're aware of the statute, aware of the fact that there are some community obligations, and what we'll be doing is providing a more comprehensive report when DHCD gets its act together a little more after digesting the comments that were presented to it through March. They'll be coming out with final regulations, and we'll be looking a little more carefully at what we may do as far as a, creating perhaps another transit-oriented district or working with the one we already have. So I don't know if there are any questions this evening, but I think the goal DHCD hoped for was that all communities be at least aware of what's going on with section 3A of chapter 48, the amendment. The fact that the governor's program for creating housing opportunities that are tied to the rapid transit resources in the Commonwealth places some expectation on our community, but we will work with it as we have, and frankly Quincy is somewhat of a model community and ahead of the curve because of what's already happened at the North Quincy T Station. So that concludes my remarks, my briefing, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Solicitor Timmons, for your briefing. Any councillors have any comments or questions? Councillor Andronico.
Thank you, just very briefly, I believe I had saw this in the Globe within the past week.
Keep your voice up.
Of course, I believe I saw this within the Globe.
We haven't been together for a while, but my hearing has done nothing but diminish.
The Globe published an article about this about a week or so ago, and it discussed for every town about how many units you would have to have within these districts, and the projection that they had for Quincy was over 11,000 within those new zones. But just so people know, moving forward, one of the, we'll say, tools that the state is considering using is removing eligibility for state grant programs like MassWorks that provide very vital utility improvement, infrastructure funding for us moving forward. So it looks like the state's taking a new approach, and we'll just have to adjust as we go along, but I'm sure you'll keep us up to date as you get more guidance from DHCD, but thanks for joining us tonight, I appreciate it.
And one of the comments that Mr. Walker made when I was discussing this with him, he was curious about the implementation, like what would happen if we fell short or whatever, and then what would happen if the community didn't want to digest the housing, the number of units that were, are expected of us. And when I outlined the programs that might be affected, he indicated that here in Quincy, we avail ourselves of those resources, so we're gonna want to work on it. I forgot you were in town and would be aware of some of this, that'll be very helpful to us. So keep some time open on your DANS card this summer then, please.
That sounds good.
It'll be of help.
Any other councillors, councillor Mahoney, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, councillor president, Mr. Timmons, it's nice to see you. I also read that article, and, and I understand that there's, you know, there's give and take, if we don't do it, we get punished on the other side, so it's not a very fair order that's coming through. But one question I have, in the 2016 ordinance that we passed, because we did it down in North Quincy, transit-oriented, oriented development, one of the things that happened was some of the condos or apartments that were built down in North Quincy, we're having some problems with parking, so people are parking in the neighborhoods, and they need, and they bought the condos, and they were not told that they can't have parking stickers in the city of Quincy. So we do have some work we have to do here in our side as well to clean up some of those things, because there are people buying into our community, new people coming into our community, not being told by the developments that's being developed, that there's some restrictions for parking, and then when they move in and they try to get the parking stickers, they can't get them because they're not allowed to park on the street. So we are definitely having some growth issues throughout the city, and I'd like to make sure we're addressing those as well. Obviously, this is something, as we move forward, our hands are going to be tied strictly because of a law that's been passed at the state level. I also read that Quincy is, as far as the growth for the state, we're third, Boston, Somerville, and then Quincy as far how much growth we've had in the city of Quincy. So we have done certainly our fair share, and we're going to be expected to do more, so we better be very close aware of what we're doing as we're developing this out to be able to work both with the people who live here and the people who we're going to be inviting to live here with the developments that we're doing. So fair warning, thank you.
And you've touched on one of the criticisms of this program, because there are two components of this, it's really incentivizing creation of housing units, and there are two things. One is, this has to be by right housing, there's no permit provision, so that affects how things would work at North Quincy, because right now you need a special permit down there. And number two is the parking requirements. One of the things the state is conceptualizing is that by creating smaller units, it's more likely that you'll have either a single driver or someone who will just rely on the T. So parking is going to be a real issue, it's one of the major criticisms of this program because they're trying to eliminate parking requirements. So this could somewhat exacerbate some of those issues that you outlined, and that's why we're waiting till the final regs come out, and till DHCD digests the criticism that was leveled before we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Timmons, that's why I brought it up, because I do think it's something that we have to be extremely on top of, and make sure that we're adjusting as we move forward for that. Thank you for all development, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Mahoney, any other councillors? Solicitor Timmons, thank you for your briefing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
Number 13, 2022-065, an order home rule petition, 2021, redistricting and reprecincting plan revised.
Clerk Crispoe, councillor McCarthy.
Motion to approve, this is the redistricting and reprecincting plan that Clerk Crispoe has worked so long and diligent on, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion made by councillor McCarthy to approve, any, second? Seconded by councillor Kane, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Andronico, councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Liang.
Yes.
Councillor Mahoney.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Palmucci.
Yes.
Councillor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana. Excuse me, seven members.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
15, oh, excuse me, 14, 2022-066, a resolve seeking an update from Department of Traffic, Parking, Alarm and Lighting.
Yes, councillors, I've introduced a resolve, you know, obviously the city of Quincy has experienced significant residential growth all across the neighborhoods. There have been a number of pedestrian and vehicle collisions in Quincy over the last few years, including fatalities, as well as a number, a number of injuries each year, but we are significantly lower than other comparable cities, at an accident rate that the city hopes to lower, obviously. Obviously, we established this TPAL, traffic parking alarm and lighting division back in July of 2016 to consolidate several aligned divisions and increase efficiency to address the city's traffic and pedestrian safety needs. Obviously, the city council, we wish to continue to work collaboratively with TPAL on development and implying, implementation of measures to address pedestrians and drivers alike in the city. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city council receives an update from the TPAL department regarding the progress of current and planned traffic projects and other activities related to easing traffic and inhale pedestrian safety. If I could entertain a motion from one of the councillors here to approve. A motion made by councillor Liang, do I have a second? Seconded councillor Andronico, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Andronico.
Yes.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Harris. Councillor Liang. Councillor Mahoney. Councillor McCarthy.
I'm sorry, check this, we need to refer this to Oversight and Public Safety Committee. Do I have a motion made by councillor Liang, motion made by councillor Liang, seconded by councillor Andronico, please call the roll.
Councillor Palmucci.
Yes.
Councillor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Okay, it's referred to Oversight and Public Safety Committee as well as passage. Thank you, councillors. Sorry about that, but it has to be referred to committee, or we won't be able to put it in there. Thank you, councillors. We have next item on the agenda, madam clerk.
Next item is number 15, 2022-067, a gift.
Waive the reading, approve, and thank you. Motion made by councillor Palmucci to approve, do I, do I have a second?
Aye.
Seconded by councillor McCarthy, please call the roll, madam clerk.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
16, 2022-068, a gift for $200 from Richard and Mary Cox for the Quincy Animal Shelter food for the animals.
Move approval, and thank you. Motion made by Counsel Palmucci and also a letter to the donors, seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. That's it for the agenda items. Going into approval of previous meeting minutes of April 4th, 2022, can someone entertain a motion to approve? Motion approved made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Communication and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. City Clerk, do we have any utilities?
We do. We do have some utilities this evening to refer to Public Works Committee for scheduling and advertising, grant a location for Mass Electric Verizon for Kendrick Ave, grant a location Mass Electric Fax and Park Road, and grant a location National Grid Gas Barham Ave.
I'm going to refer to Counsel Andronico if I could, because Counsel Harris is not here. You're the vice chair of that Public Works. Does he have to make a motion to approve? Can you do it from you?
We can just refer them to...
Just refer to Public Works Committee. Okay, we'll refer to Public Works Committee. Motion made by...
Make the motion to refer to Public Works Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Andronico, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? They're all going to be referred to Public Works. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Seeing none. Reports of committees. Counsel Mahoney.
So, I'm just looking for an update. I think it's in the, it's in the Finance Committee for 2022-038, the resolve seeking an update on the animal shelter. And then also, I'm also interested in having an update on the 2022-48 resolve seeking an update on 74 Greenleaf. We are going into budget, but, you know, Greenleaf is important because it was a public building project from years ago, and they're still working on it. And the animal shelter is a very important one to get an update on because they know they're moving over to a North Quincy temporary location, and we have other expending expectations to be happening here in the city council. And that is going to be a cost to taxpayers for a separate location, so we want to know what's happening with the location that was decided upon in 2017, I believe. So, if I could get an update from that and get that into, in-house, so we can start talking about it, that'd be great.
Counsel Mahoney has some information on animal shelter and 74...
Greenleaf Street.
Greenleaf Street.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on that, please, even though it's a motion? Oh, okay. Any other counselors on reports of committees? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Anybody, counselors? Okay, none. Seeing none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Seeing none.
Can I just, I just have a quick question. Just a quick question. I've already had text messages from people asking when the budget, the proposed budget's going to be online for people to review, so if we could get an update as to when that's going to be available for people to see online.
Tomorrow. Looks like tomorrow, Tuesday, May 3rd. Tuesday, May 3rd.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Counsel Phelan.
Obviously, we've got the budget tonight, and we're going to be scheduling committee meetings. Jen, do you have the list? I have a proposed list. I'd like all the counselors to take a look at it. We're planning on three, three separate nights that we'll be doing, we'll be doing the public hearing and then Finance and Public Safety and Public Works, so Jen's going to hand those out. We'll be doing, we'll be doing a Finance Committee meeting next Monday on, on the Pine Hill Cemetery, the proposal before us on Pine Hill. So, this is a rough schedule. Let us know if there's any conflicts or anything like that. We're going to, we have a lot of items coming in before the meeting, so we'll be making, we'll be making a lot of, there's going to be a lot of Finance Committee meetings coming up, so just getting everyone ready, and this is the proposed schedule for doing it. We have 45 days to act, so that would mean we'd have to have this passed by June 17th, just so everyone's aware. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a tentative schedule, counselors, so if you have any conflicts or anything, feel free to contact Counsel Phelan as well as any of the other counselors for other, I believe Counsel McCarthy has a few ordinance stuff that's coming in as well. So, you know, feel free to contact Jen to schedule the proper days that you can't make it. Yes, Counsel Palmucci.
Just a question for you, the Finance Chair. So, this schedule is with the notion that all goes according to plan, we would be voting on the budget on June 6th at that city council meeting. Is that the idea of...
Well, we're basically... Because the third meeting will be after the 45 days.
Right, okay.
Technically. So, yeah, and I also realize that we might not get it done in three nights, so we have to have a little wiggle room to have another meeting. We could always call a separate meeting, a special meeting, but that would have to be before, before actually June 17th, before it would become, because at that point, it becomes whatever the mayor presented.
Right.
Any cuts or any changes we make, if we want to put them in, we have to vote on them before that, before it goes, before it goes after that, it becomes whatever the mayor presented. So, I don't think the, you know, that's where we want to go.
Don't want to do that, no.
And we also don't want to spend, unless we have to, we want to keep the nights, you know, to get it done in an efficient manner. So, that's the stuff. I'll be asking our auditor to provide the sheet she's provided every year for us, which gives an excellent read on where the departments are, how much they've spent, and what's left in their budget. So, I'll be asking the auditor to do that same work, that excellent work that she's done every year before, before each meeting. So, all the councils will have them before we go into that hearing.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Phelan.
Any other counselors? Anything on you, Counsel McCarthy?
No, I mean, it's covered here.
Okay. Seeing we are done with our agenda items and everything, can someone entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Counsel Palmucci to adjourn is now 7:31.